Buenos dias, todos. Este escenario público del Comité de Transportes Maritimes y Aeronaves, Parques de Turismo, educación superior y el avance de las mujeres, jóvenes y ciudadanos mayores se ha llamado a orden. Hoy es jueves 6 de abril de 2023 y el momento ahora es 8:31 a.m. Para recordar, y en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta, los avisos para este escenario fueron enviados el 30 de marzo y nuevamente el 4 de abril. Además, el escenario fue notificado en el sitio web legislativo de Guam y el sitio web de avisos público de Guam. Me acompañan hoy por la mañana, quiero agradecer a los miembros del comité, la vicepresidenta Jess Luhon, el miembro del comité Telo Taidegui y el senador Tom Fisher, sus colegas mocios. Antes de proceder a la discusión, quiero primero proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para aquellos presentes. La conducta de este escenario será la siguiente: el testimonio escrito se entregará al comité. Por favor, provee al personal legislativo su testimonio escrito para fotocopia. El testimonio puede ser leído y el testimonio largo debe ser resumido a unos cinco minutos. Aquellos que testifican podrán presentarse en forma escrita o oralmente. Una vez terminado, por favor, permanezcan en el cuarto para preguntas o testimonios adicionales, como sea deseado por los miembros del comité. Las preguntas y testimonios estarán limitados a la naturaleza de esta agenda. La actual agenda es la programación de la alcalde Robert RDC Hoffmann para servir como Consejo de Alcalde de Guam, miembro del Consejo de visitantes de Guam, Board of Directors. La presidenta invitará a individuos que han firmado para testificar. Antes de hablar, les pedimos que presten su testimonio. Por favor, den su nombre para el registro. La orden de las preguntas comenzará con el panel de senadores que completarán sus líneas de preguntas para este escenario de programación. La inferencia personal sobre el carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testificando no es permitida. Cualquier violación de esta regla general de conducta resultará en la deshacerse del cuarto público de este procedimiento. Individuos que fallan en mantener la forma adecuada y decoro pueden ser restringidos de proporcionar testimonio oral y/o pueden ser pidiendo irse o ser escortados y deshacidos del cuarto. La forma adecuada y decoro debe ser practicada por todos los presentes en el cuarto público. La misión del Bureau de Visitas de Guam es promover eficientemente y efectivamente Guam como una destino seguro y satisfactorio para los visitantes y derivar el máximo beneficio para el pueblo de Guam. La industria turística de Guam se considera el principal contribuyente económico a la economía de Guam. GVB es un puente crítico que une al gobierno, la industria turística, los visitantes y la comunidad local, y aspira a contribuir exitosamente a una buena calidad de vida para los residentes a través del turismo. El Board of Directors es responsable de promover la satisfección de los visitantes, facilitar el crecimiento ordenado y mantenimiento de la industria de los visitantes, y animar y apoyar las actividades locales, programas y desarrollo para mejorar Guam como una destino atractivo de turismo. En este momento, me gustaría llamar a aquellos que han firmado para testificar. Tenemos al presidente del Consejo de Alcalde de Guam, el alcalde Jesse Aleck. Tenemos al presidente y CEO de GVB, el presidente Carl Gutierrez. No estoy seguro de quién es. El alcalde Anthony Chargaloff, el alcalde Jun Blaz y vicepresidente Jesse Bautista. Si quieren proporcionar testimonio oral, pueden unirse ahora al table. Bien, entonces aquellos que quieran proporcionar cualquier testimonio oral, por favor, unen a nosotros al table. Bien, si no, el alcalde Hoffmann, usted es el que tiene.
Buenos días, honorable presidente Shelton, y miembros del comité, soy Robert Hoffmann. Vengo hoy a pedir humildemente su apoyo por mi nominación. Soy humilde representando al Consejo de Alcalde de Guam como Board of Directors para el Bureau de Visitas de Guam. Serví anteriormente en el Board desde 2005 hasta 2010, y nuevamente desde 2013 hasta 2020, ocupando varias posiciones en el comité, incluyendo desarrollo de la comunidad, gestión de destinos y presidente de la Comisión de Presidentes de América del Norte y del mercado Pacífico. La inclusión del Consejo de Alcalde en el nivel del Board siempre ha sido bienvenida porque traemos la perspectiva de la línea de fondo, de las bases de origen. Después de todo, las comunidades, el pueblo y la cultura son lo que hacen que Guam sea un destino único. Al final del día, los trabajadores, del guardián de seguridad hasta la mesa de frente, de administradores hasta personal y incluso los propietarios, todos vuelven a la comunidad. Quiero agradecer públicamente a usted, senador, por siempre jugar un papel activo y involucrante en el turismo. He visto su participación y interés en el turismo como el presidente de supervisión de GVB. Trae una visión bien equilibrada de los necesidades turísticas y económicas de nuestra isla. Mientras en GVB, durante esos muchos años, me sorprendió descubrir la cantidad de trabajo y responsabilidad que GVB ha tomado fuera de sus deberes legislativos y fiduciarios y misión. Desde las limpiezas de la carretera hasta la cortina de hierro de la carretera, hasta el extremo sur de la isla, a la limpieza de los covertos de derramación y de los basinos de acero, desarrollando señales de playa, lidiando con el manejo de pan, pintando sobre graffiti, removiendo el basura en los parques públicos, lidiando con los edificios abandonados y tratando de corregir los problemas de los aportes aportes. GVB hace mucho más para nuestra isla. GVB ha centrado sus esfuerzos y financiación limitada en el marketing de Guam como destino, pero es forzado a involucrarse en la mantenimiento de la isla porque nuestros socios, interesados y visitantes levantan los problemas. Sí, algunas agencias cuyas responsabilidades y mandatos están bajo, llegan a la brecha debido a su falta de poder humano, autoridad y recursos y financiación. Necesitamos ser proactivos y hacerlo porque si no actuamos, el continuo declive en áreas de recreación, instalaciones, graffiti y otros problemas ultimamente dañarán nuestro sector de turismo y nuestra economía de la isla. Nuestra imagen como destino de resort está en riesgo. Desde la última vez que serví en el Board, he visto que GVB se está haciendo lentamente un pequeño diente, pero es una tarea hercálatra. De verdad, debido al financiamiento, la mayoría de estos temas requieren simplemente suficiente financiamiento para completar esas tareas. Como sabe, el turismo es la fuerza motriz de la economía de Guam, y en tratar de convertirse en un destino de clase mundial, la mantenimiento y mantenimiento es vital. Todos nos beneficiamos cuando la economía de Guam es buena. En los próximos meses, usted y los miembros de este organismo sagrado trabajarán en los presupuestos anuales para el gobierno de Guam. Mientras respeto la tarea asombrosa que ustedes deben jugar en esto, por favor, sepan que necesitamos mejorar nuestro producto si queremos permanecer competitivos con otros destinos. Nuestros inversiones en el marketing podrían ser mucho más efectivas si se diera la apertura de recursos de financiamiento adecuados y apoyo. Mantengan en cuenta que el apropiación anual a la venta de Guam y lidiar con todos los problemas de mantenimiento de destinos mencionados arriba requeriría una inversión significativa. La aprobación de los fondos de atracción turística a áreas y programas que no están directamente relacionados con el turismo es contraproducente porque el inversión debería enfocarse en el motor económico de Guam, esta compleja criatura competitiva llamada turismo. GVB es una de las pocas organizaciones vinculadas a GOV Guam que generan ingresos. Estoy seguro de que todos han oído lo que se dijo sobre nuestra isla y la creciente frustración del Bureau en tratar de usar los recursos limitados para no solo vender Guam y impulsar ingresos, sino para mantener esa zona hotelera de manera que no degrada nuestra imagen de la isla. Guam está en una cruz de puertas como destino, y necesitamos su ayuda para empezar a moverse de un destino de resort de primera categoría internacional de nivel internacional. Espero trabajar con el Board y darle lo que sé y he aprendido a través de los años. Estoy centrado en mejorar la calidad de nuestra isla para aumentar la calidad de los turistas que recibimos y el rendimiento y el profit que recibimos de cada visitante. En los próximos meses, espero tomar en consideración las abordaciones creativas que examinen nuevas formas de lograr estos objetivos largos. Espero que continúemos teniendo el apoyo legislativo. Tenemos muchos desafíos por delante y estoy preparado para llegar a la ocasión. Como mi amigo Nino Berdempinko, el propio turismo siempre me dijo: "Debemos hacer lo que podemos para hacer que Guam sea un lugar seguro para vivir, trabajar y jugar y hacer negocios. Necesitamos arreglar, limpiar y limpiar la isla." Estoy honrado de ser su padre y aprecio las palabras de sabiduría que compartió y impartió conmigo. El turismo es el negocio de todos, y pido humildemente su voto de confianza. Gracias, Encinitas Masi.
Muchas gracias, alcalde. Y para recordar, todos los que se han firmado para el escenario hoy están aquí en apoyo de su nominación.
Gracias.
Empezaremos con preguntas del vicepresidente, senador Luhon.
Gracias, madame presidenta. Buenos días, alcalde Hoffmann. ¿Cómo estás hoy por la mañana?
Estoy muy bien, gracias.
Y felicitaciones por su nominación.
Gracias.
He conocido a usted durante años, a su familia durante años. Creo que su tienda antigua está justo por la calle, su tienda musical. Quite a músico que eres también, pero nuevamente, felicitaciones, su nominación. Déjame preguntarle algunas cosas. Como el appointee del Consejo de Alcalde y usted siendo alcalde también, todos sabemos que los alcalde, pienso en cada comunidad ahora, son receptores de un tremendo apoyo del Bureau de Visitas de Guam en cuanto a, ya sabe, las festividades centricas de la comunidad o lo que sea que sea. Y tengo que decir, usted tiene un equipo visionario en el Bureau de Visitas de Guam porque estoy leyendo lo que está pasando en el Bureau de Visitas de Hawaii cuando están listos para disolver el Bureau, que está listo para ser disuelto en, en realidad, creo que va a ser fusionado, el proyecto ahora va a ir a ambas casas, tienen, ya sabe, legislatura bicameral allí, y parece que está listo para pasar porque lo que ha pasado en el pasado es que eran tan centricos a los turistas, ya saben, están recibiendo 10 millones de turistas al año, y lo que está pasando, las comunidades estaban gritando por ayuda porque, ya sabe, tenían todos estos turistas entrando a sus comunidades y sus counties no estaban siendo ayudados y mejorados para mejorar la experiencia de los turistas. Ahora vemos, quiero decir, desearía que hubieran millones y millones de personas entrando a Guam, pero lo que está pasando en GVB es lo que es el liderazgo del Bureau de Visitas de Guam, está por delante de eso porque eso es lo que Hawaii quiere hacer ahora mismo, es ser, creo que lo están llamando, están disolviendo su agencia de turismo en lo que se llama Agencia de Gestión de Destinos. Y, y así que dicho esto, no tenemos a los millones de personas y todo eso, pero, ¿están de acuerdo en la visión que tiene la gestión de GVB en cuanto a mejorar las comunidades y su uniqueness y todo eso? Porque nuevamente, esto es por delante de lo que Hawaii está haciendo en este punto, así que su input en eso.
Claro, gracias por la pregunta. Creo en eso. Creo que desde que estaba allí, he servido bajo los gerentes generales de Tony Lamarena, quiero decir, estaba allí con Jerry Perez, Joanne Camacho, Mary Torres, Carl Peggalini y Nate De Knight, y eso es algo que cuando estaba allí, siempre estaba hablando de desarrollo de la comunidad. Ese es el inversión que queremos ver. La situación de Hawaii es exactamente la misma. Están obteniendo gente que está dejando las zonas de hotel y yendo a las comunidades para caminar y trepar, y están considerando incluso una tarifa de impacto, casi como una sobtasa. Y, ya sabe, eso es algo que no creo que podamos hacer porque tenemos ese equilibrio. Hemos visto ese inversión en nuestras comunidades durante los últimos diez, quince años, y me encantaría estar en Boran cuando, incluso cuando el senador Taidegui estaba allí, ella siempre ha sido útil para ayudar a las comunidades, ya sea a través de los préstamos de fiesta y luego proyectos pequeños dentro de nuestras comunidades ayudándonos a crecer eso. Pero hay ese equilibrio. Pienso en el total ingreso colectivo del Fondo de Atracción y Turismo, la porción va a satisfacer el acuerdo, y luego el resto pasa a GVB, luego el resto pasa a estas otras cosas. El Consejo de Alcalde ha sido receptor del Fondo de Atracción y Turismo, eso es lo que en realidad fondea nuestra beautificación y nuestra limpieza, y así vemos eso. He visto destinos donde están alimentados con el turismo porque no ven los beneficios. Así que tienes lugares en Italia, en Venecia y en Francia que dicen: "Turistas, vayan a casa, déjanos en paz, queremos nuestra comunidad pacífica." Creo que nuestra gente acepta eso, la idea de que mientras vean el inversión de sus comunidades, continuarán abrazando la industria turística para decir: "Sí, pueden venir aquí", y pueden ver eso. Ya sabe, siempre ha sido un desafío encontrar ese equilibrio. Ya sabe, siempre decimos, siempre decimos que un dólar con el Consejo de Alcalde va mucho más lejos que un dólar en cualquier otro lugar porque ese alcalde asegurará de que ese dólar se encuentre su camino hacia la comunidad, ya sea, ya sabe, pintar. Hay un montón de proyectos que todavía necesitan ser manejados, overlooks, vistas, incluso cosas como agua, pero requieren mantenimiento regular, no es solo un tiempo de inundación de agua y pintar y deshacerse. Y muchas veces se aplica a los alcalde para hacerlo. Los alcalde no tienen la responsabilidad de algunos de estos sitios de turismo principales.
Claro, claro.
Pero se mira cuando el basura no se recoge en las piscinas Inalahan, se convierte en el alcalde de Inalahan diciendo: "¿Qué está pasando?" Y estamos como: "Oh, eso es una cosa de DPR". Pero luego el alcalde termina teniendo que hacerlo porque nos importa nuestras comunidades. Y lo mismo pasa para cada otro parque y cada otra área, incluyendo aquí en Hagatnia. Y así que me gusta ver que GVB ha tomado un mayor inversión en esas comunidades, y creo que ese es un paso en la dirección correcta, y las discusiones de lo que podemos hacer para ayudar a crecer el turismo en cada una de las comunidades únicamente, es bienvenida por todos nosotros porque creo que todos tenemos algo único para ofrecer, y soy más que solo un paro de baño para la mayoría de los turistas en su camino a golf en Leo Palace, y, ya sabe, pero cuando veo y veo turistas, los amo. Y así que mi comunidad está activamente involucrada en programas de intercambio de estudiantes, y esa es una forma de realmente mostrar quiénes somos como gente, es invitar a personas más jóvenes a nuestras comunidades y a nuestras escuelas secundarias para decir: "Hey, ya sabes, ven, ven a fusionar con nuestros hijos". Y así Bishop and Gartner tiene un gran programa de intercambio coreano que están allí durante meses, y eso pone bien la economía, y así, sí, las comunidades se benefician mucho, y yo apoyaría eso.
No, en apoyo a eso, ya sabe, sabía que iba a responder de esa manera de todos modos, pero, ¿cómo balanceas? Quiero decir, ¿estás a favor de, de, nuevamente, el, ya sabe, usted ya respondió a esa pregunta en cuanto a la mejora de la comunidad y en cuanto a GVB, pero, ¿cómo balanceas eso nuevamente en la necesidad y los fondos que necesitan ir al lado del marketing para traer, ya sabe, porque no tenemos el problema de Hawaii en el sentido de que tenemos millones, diez millones al año de turistas entrando, y de igual manera, así que necesitamos tratar de conseguir, ya sabe, al menos dos millones de nuevo aquí en este punto. Y así, ha habido críticos que dirán: "Bueno, estás dando, estás dando a las comunidades y estás quitando esto". Y hay críticos que están diciendo, ya sabe, "¿Cómo es que estás quitando esto y haciendo eso?" Pero siente que hay un equilibrio, que podría haber un equilibrio, y hay un equilibrio en hacer tal cosa.
Sí, porque pienso en el presupuesto total de GVB, desde lo que recuerdo, creo que el 60% va al marketing y luego el resto va a algún destino de gestión, algo va a proyectos y tareas específicas que han tomado, como la cortina de hierro y cosas así. Y luego, así que en esos mercados en sí también hace inversiones, como el Comité de Comunión de Reconocimiento, el Comité Cultural y Comunidad de Reconocimiento, hacen inversiones. Y en términos, cuando serví en ese comité, está construyendo la capacidad, como invertir en todos los pa'as, todos los gumas, y, ya sabe, para aquellos, está construyendo capacidad dentro de las academias de danza, porque eso es lo que queremos, queremos promover esa autenticidad. Así que había algunos modos en el presupuesto de marketing que en realidad flotaron en algunos de los problemas de gestión de destinos, pero creo que cuando estaba el último tiempo allí, el manejo de destino necesitaba, creo, más o menos un millón de dólares si estuviéramos haciendo todo lo que realmente queríamos y queríamos hacer, desde cámaras hasta luces de calle hasta carreteras, hasta, ya sabe, realmente arreglando todas las vistas y todo, porque aquellos, ya sabe, los operadores turísticos constantemente volvieron a la satisfacción de los visitantes y todos esos informes, eso era algo como: "Este es un lugar agradable, pero usted tiene un carro de basura aquí". Y luego se nos vuelve a ver diciendo: "¿Quién elimina ese carro de basura?" O: "Este es un lugar agradable, pero estos son los peligros y los riesgos de caída. No queremos que los turistas se lastimen aquí". Así que creo que una inversión podría ser, una inversión más podría ser tomada, directamente o indirectamente. Una gran parte del dinero TAF también fue a la venta de cosas en GMH, Customs, Parks and Recs y todas las otras agencias también. Gran dinero fue allí, y ellos tienen un gran propósito.
Claro.
Y es solo, ¿fue la fuente de financiamiento correcta para usar? No lo sé, no creo que sí. Podría haber pensado que podrían haber encontrado una forma diferente de hacerlo, pero en el momento era el dinero más disponible en esos años. Así que constantemente vimos estos temas donde el dinero se dejó fuera, y el turismo no es solo, el TAF no es solo para GVB, y eso se ha conocido, pertenece al pueblo, y el pueblo debería beneficiarse de ello, y esta es una forma en que van a beneficiarse.
No, déjame hacer esta pregunta nuevamente porque creo, si no me equivoco, fue en uno de los medios de comunicación, no voy a mencionar quién fue porque no recuerdo quién fue, pero había un individuo, un famoso individuo que criticó GVB y sus esfuerzos, que GVB no ha estado haciendo un trabajo lo suficientemente bueno, y para algunas de las cosas que ustedes mencionaron, carreteras y parques y cosas de ese tipo. Esa fue una página de publicidad, creo que fue hace unos días. Ahora, déjame hacer esto porque la semana pasada estábamos elaborando un proyecto, y el Departamento de Administración casi dejó de hacer turismo, ¿vale? En cuanto a la sostenibilidad y los fondos que vienen, y años pasan, primero y por supuesto, es turista, 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 turista. Ahora, no hay una sola nota de turismo y de sostenibilidad y los números de lo que significan, y necesitamos conseguir esto, y estamos avanzando hacia esto. Y me quedé atemorizado por eso. Era puramente dependiente de la construcción militar, sección 30, EITC, y cosas de ese tipo. Ahora, tengo que darle a los chicos, supongo, los alcalde y la mejora de la comunidad y el Bureau de Visitas de Guam por los números que estamos obteniendo, y desde lo que veo es que los números proyectados son, superan los números proyectados, pero todavía estamos ahí, todavía hay mucho trabajo que hacer. Dicho esto, es como un descanso para nosotros en este punto, ya sabe, en tratar de mejorar. Ahora, ¿están de acuerdo en este descanso, en este descanso, que puede ser un poco más de esfuerzo, ya sabe, del Bureau de Visitas de Guam para ir mejorando las comunidades para esa experiencia? Ya sabe, en ese descanso, es como, ya sabe, los hoteles, es su descanso, renovan y cosas de ese tipo, ¿verdad? Y así, aprovechando ese descanso, que tal vez GVB pueda mejorar las comunidades un poco más, un poco más de ayuda para ayudarles ustedes. Quiero decir, porque sabemos que su presupuesto no puede soportar, ya sabe, todo lo que se desea de cualquier comunidad. Y así, dicho esto, ¿están de acuerdo o ¿se ve que en este descanso, o estarían en favor de este descanso, que más atención en la mejora de la comunidad para que, supongo, la gestión de destino se mejore? ¿Su opinión sobre eso?
Sí, estoy en plena apoyo a eso. Creo que cada destino hizo eso durante los dos años que estaba en covid, vieron lugares hacer eso, vieron lugares arreglados, y también dio la oportunidad al entorno de relajarse. La mayoría de estas playas y estos riegos necesitaban ese tiempo para respirar, y, ya sabe, los ríos se volvieron azules en Venecia, y así fue la primera vez en cuántos años. Pero sí, aquí creo que los hoteles tuvieron una gran oportunidad también de hacer ese importante inversión en sí mismos. Creo que es solo, ya sabe, no necesitamos arreglar nada porque lo que necesitamos hacer es ya allí en las encuestas de satisfacción, en los reportes de estrellas, en los planes de turismo, diciendo: "Esto es lo que necesita la inversión". Y las industrias han dicho: "Hey, ¿crees que podemos centrarnos en este dinero en arreglar algunos de estos problemas de vista?" Así que sí, apoyo plenamente a eso. Quiero ver a las otras agencias salir y involucrarse también porque todos siempre se convierte en GVB porque piensan que es el más rico de todos ellos. Pero, ya sabe, hay problemas de aportes a los 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 aportes a money. I know the mayors are making headway with what they can with funds they got. And but, you know, it's those other things like the student exchange, like sports exchanges, we're all for that. I think as mayors, we really enjoyed when we had Philippine baseball teams come in here and challenge us and we challenged them and we did that kind of exchange. That's one way to grow tourism. When we used to have those cruise ships with all those tourists, many of you remember this, because they would park and then we've had 500 kids down at Ipau or 500 kids down at Adalup. And, you know, we've had the student exchange where Saint Francis and all the other schools and the public schools would go in. These, I think, give people a different perspective and we kind of use our opportunity. So I think when during that hearing, when you're talking about why tourism wasn't mentioned, because I know it's very fluid and there's real no one way to, you know, we're at the we're the beck and call and mercy of the airlines. And that's kind of the difficult part. If they decide, oh, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna maybe decrease airlines' capacity or change the kind of plane, then it's hard for us. So us and the Marianas have a difficult time. We're at the mercy of that. So GVB needs what it can to kind of also incentivize and get some of those airlines to say, hey, can you can you bring tourists here? But, you know, our people surprisingly have helped save some of the restaurants here because they're eating out more and they enjoy it more. It's hard to get a place on a Friday night now. And that's a great feeling. And to see all these other places kind of reopen, that's a testament to the last two years of leadership at GVB. They've really ramped up what they could, where they can, and it's going after those new markets. It's going after some of the existing markets and making some investments. But the new markets are also key because these are people that haven't been to Guam that are excited to learn about us.
So again, from what I'm hearing, are you are you in agreement then in the direction where Team GVB is headed and what they're and what they're doing in regards to cultural exchanges and things like that? And I know quite a few of the mayors have have been a part of a delegation in regards to exchange programs and everything like that. So are you are you in agreement in that direction and in that enhancement and that part of GVB and in their management and what they're trying to do for Destination Guam?
Yes, we recently hosted the Taiwan Indigenous Group here, and I would love that some of our senior citizens go there and and work on that. And because that's that kind of exchange, because there are specific culture to learn. So yes, those those exchanges are valuable. The return on investment sometimes can't be pinpointed immediately because it's they go back and tell their friends and they it's that one picture, that one post, that one video that they do that makes waves there. But it's not captured because, you know, they're not taking out ads or, you know, buying this press time. But those 200, 300 people that see that kind of have that indication, I may want to travel here. When I was fortunate enough to go to Malaysia, a lot of them didn't know that it's visa free to come to Guam. And they were excited about it and that we, you know, one of the things they kept asking was about the food. Do we have halal food? And I was like, oh, maybe that's something we need to work on here. But that interest and the fact is that, you know, one in every four Malaysians travel, that's big. And their travel shows are huge. And I've been fortunate to go to Jada and see that as well. And we're up against some very stiff competition. But what's really unique about us is is our song, is our dance. It's what people know about us about the world is our language, our song and our dance. They may not know us personally, but if they hear a Johnny Sablon song or a Jessie and Ruby song, they'll be like, I heard that song at T Galeria. And that's something they'll connect. Or they see us, you know, as we talk in our very unique language and our very old and ancient culture. I think, you know, our 4,000 year old culture is something we really got to showcase out there. So which is why those shows that are either in even in California and in Texas and Washington and stuff like that, those are very important invited because you have 150,000 Tramoros living there. And they they have this passion and love for Guam that I've never seen that we don't have here. We don't put, you know, Guam stickers and all these Guam brands and we don't pay, you know, they pay for these goodie boxes to fly over there to get lemon powder that we take for granted that we can go to the mom and pop store to get. And so that's an appreciation they have. I would love to see that they have an opportunity to come home, but at a cheaper rate. That's always my thing is, you know, they always say that, Mayor, I would love to come home and visit, but it's a commitment to come to Guam. You know, you gotta take a loan out. So that's that's one issue there on that side. But I know how you feel about that. I am in support of that as well. I think competition helps lower the prices and we've seen
That's for another that's for another
That's for another hearing. But I've seen it. And you've seen it happen with the Marianas. Whenever there's competition, the price goes down and the people at Marianas can fly.
Sure. One, I'm hoping this will be my last question. But with that, earlier, you had mentioned all the different administrations you served under and the different general managers. And now I think it's president, right? It's called. And and those were, of course, pre pandemic, pre pandemic times. Now, post pandemic, you're going in there with a different perspective, but you also you also had previously served. Now, what perspective would you would you bring in there now that is different from maybe, I don't know if it's the old way of thinking? Do we have to think a new way? What would you bring in now that is maybe different that we have to that GVB has to do or the board will have to do different now, post pandemic?
One of the things I'd like to focus on is something that I think is really unique about our culture is a respect for our elders. And we see that in the Asian culture. There's specific areas and priority seating. There's priority lines. There's and I think that's something to do. These travelers in the Asia Pacific area, they value their elders as well. And but when we come to Guam, we talk about we love our manuko, we value them, but there's no priority lane for them at some of our retailers or even at the airport or any of the buses or the seedings. And I think that's a perspective. As I got older too, I'm like, you know what, it's true. Because my parents got older and I want I don't want my dad to stand for several hours at a time having to clear, you know, a line. I think, you know, if we really are truly a culture of our seniors and that we respect them, we should take that upon ourselves immediately.
Yeah.
Immediately, respect our elders. And then that will kind of flow out that way. And the perspective I have too is, how can we, you know, how can we take care of our people and those workers? The workers are the ones that I worry about a lot. It's the ones who come home. They're those bellhops. I used to always say, I have no I have no interest in business in tourism. The only interest I have is those people when they come home, those bellhops, those service industry, those waiters and waitresses, they're my friends, they're my parries and mullies. And when we sit out and we eat and we talk about it, they talk about how they feel about the industry. They wish they either had healthcare or they wish they had, you know, other things that, you know, better benefits. And so it's slowly meeting them. But some of them have really been in the industry for 30, 40 years. I'm like, why? Why? It's amazing that you've worked the same job for this. And, you know, they're encouraged, they're encouraged by it. But I think the industry could do more to encourage more locals to even kind of get trained in that and really be more be more hands on in those trainings.
Well, let me ask you that. And I'm glad you said that. Would you be in favor then of something similar to what they they have in the Philippines where their senior citizens, all senior citizens, registered, of course, with their with their prospective villages or barangays where at this point, and they get wherever it is, food, medicine and things like that. I think it's 10, 15 or 20% off with their with their senior citizen cards. Because we have our senior citizen cards, but, you know, I just saw it. But would you be in support of something like that for 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 entities? Again, you're saying to support the again, and the respect for the elders, would you support something like that?
Yes, Senator.
And GVB backed?
I would support that. And I don't think it just should be a certain day either. Because some businesses here, only only on a certain day you can do certain things. If we really respect our elders, give that to them and extend that discount to our all Asian cultures. They're a senior, they're they're saving their money. And what we've noticed is, we call them the silver market, is they're the repeat visitor. They love the fine wines and the good food. They're the good shoppers. They're the ones who want that experience. They're not going to go off roading. They're not the ones who are going to damage our ecosystems. So you're right in that manner. And I think seniors, you know, we saw that. I think when we first went to the Philippines and to find that in Makati, they even give them a cake on their birthday, every senior of that area. And I was like, wow, this is good. But they have to be a registered voter too. I was like, ah, that's the catch. That's how you kind of get them. But it was and, you know, just, you know, that's a culture that's closely associated with ours. But I'd like to see that a priority and making health and safety a priority. If if these workers, my friends, my parries and mullies, they need to feel safe also in their what they're doing in their jobs. And they need to feel supported. And if if that kind of happens in their end and getting that training where they're free to express themselves, free to talk about their culture, free to say hafadeen, you know, we used to say, learn at least 10 words. So then they can do that.
It's something I again, I applaud you that. And I'll ask the chair, maybe we can jointly work on something like that for our seniors. But thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Tidagui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our good co-chair had a lot of good information, you know, and talking about what you plan to do, what you have done in the past. I do have to ask though, Mayor Hoffman, and by the way, you know, I've worked with you before when I was the deputy general manager at the Guam Visitors Bureau. And I saw the work that you did. I have no complaints there at all. You know, we could have done more, but like everything, we can always do more. But, you know, I have to ask you, you were sitting in this position from 2005 to 2010. That's five years. And then there was a break, about a three year break and or two year break. So who was sitting in that position?
Mayor Carol Tayama.
Oh, Tayama, okay. And then you came back in 2013, all the way to 2020.
Yes.
And then there was a little bit of break again, you know, of course, Mayor Paco has resigned. He was sitting there for about three years. And then you're back again. There are 19 village mayors out there, you know, and you've been sitting on there for quite a long time. So I'm just curious, how do the mayors choose who is to sit on the board?
There's different ways. The way it reads is the president of the mayor's council or his designee. That's how the law reads. And so it was never, sometimes it was chosen by at body or sometimes it was just chosen whoever the president kind of designated. And it depends, it's a
The president of the mayor's council. So it's up to the president of the mayor's council to decide who sits on this board?
Or his designee, yes.
Or his designee? Okay.
And majority of the board, just like that. I believe that is the way it's written.
It's written in the law that way. Which law? Guam Code annotated?
It's how it's chosen where each of the seats. The same goes for the Commission on Self-Determination and a few others. It says the president of the mayor's council or his or their designee. And it doesn't say chosen anywhere else.
How it's chosen. So has there been ever an opportunity for other mayors to like, you know, decide to vote who sits on this? Because, you know, we talked about destination management. And it's not just Tuman. It's Humatek, it's Inalahan, it's Talofowo. It's all the villages on this island that need to be showcased. And I know that the sitting president is very keen on that, showcasing each of our villages. I mean, we know shopping is in Tuman, you know, and there's there's been a lot of assistance in the last two decades focused in on Tuman, but nothing on the outside. So, you know, other villages, other mayors can bring different perspectives. You've been sitting there for almost seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 years in this position. You know, I'm just wondering why, you know,
I've also been elected five times with no opponent at 99.7% of the vote.
Yep. But by the mayor's council, I do understand. But don't you think it's time to allow another mayor to sit in this position?
Well,
To provide a different perspective. Not that you're not doing a good job or when you were sitting there, you were doing a great job. But it's a new era, you know, it's new ideas, you know, you talked about manuko, but we're talking about now technology.
A lot of what we've worked on since 2005 has still been issues there. We've I've been before this body and budget hearings, I've been before this body asking for that money for those villages. I've been before this community, I've been asking for certain things for that. I don't think, you know, I've served in different capacities in other boards. I've been on Guma Mami board for 18 years. No one's asked me, should you give it up on something? It's if I think I serve where I can and I kind of bring that institutional knowledge. I think seniority and bringing that kind of perspective has value. And it's shown time and time again in many other positions, you rely on your elders to do that on that. The perspectives I have and never once have I said it's only Sina Hanya or I have directed money or transferred money or benefited from it directly. It was always constantly push this out, push this out. When I organized the Miss Guam Tourism pageants, we pushed it out, we pushed it out. When we organized Fiesta tours, we pushed out the money. When we organized Fiesta grants, when we organized mini grants, these were all things we did to push out the money there. So whether it was me or somebody else, I pushed out the money the same way anybody else did. It's not where I said, it's only me. I don't sit there. It takes a lot of work to go there. It's two meetings a month, sometimes plus the committee meetings. You've seen that.
Especially when you're sitting on other boards. I know it's very taxing.
Times away from the family. But at the same time, I'm committed to do that because I've seen what else needs to be done.
Don't get me wrong, Mayor Hoffman. I know that you're very willing to serve on this board. You're capable and everything like that. I just think that, you know, we, well, don't you think that it should be like one, four years, another mayor, and the next time, you know, different villages to serve in that capacity?
Put it in the law that you have term limits, then we could do it. And do the same for yourselves.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Do the same for yourselves.
Term limits? Well, this is a board. There's a difference between an elected by the people of Guam versus, you know, one person electing someone to sit on a board. Now, what we should change is that rule saying that the president has the authority to elect one person. Maybe it could be all the mayors combined together vote on who should take this board. Maybe that's an idea, you know?
It could be just a mayor and it could rotate, as long as the position, just like the CSD, just like certain other things, as long as there's a rep from that and not a specific person that has to go through a confirmation hearing, because not everybody goes through confirmation hearings either.
I totally agree, Mayor Hoffman. I think everyone should go to a confirmation hearing that sits on this board. And I think everyone should have financials also to be reported. Not only you, because I know that you have to put your financials, but I think those that are elected by memberships of the board have don't have to provide their financials. And that's very unfair, you know, for anyone. So that's something I've already worked on, Mayor Hoffman. I hope I get your support on that. I have a bill that's out that will actually require that, you know, to have the financials for everyone. Just moving on, because I know, you know, we have another hearing going on. But are you familiar that the bylaws and the laws of the enabling legislation is contradictory to each other? Have you heard the issues that's going on there? And how are you going to address this?
I'm not familiar with it, but I've known that it changed twice, I think, while I was there. I don't know what's changed since. So I'm not familiar with it.
Well, let me tell you, there's a lot of contradictions, you know, moving on. So you might want to look in that if you're voted in, to definitely look at that issue. Also, there, since you were being appointed and the law requires that the, okay, we talked about financials. Thank you for bringing that up because that was one of my questions. And you do believe that every board member should have to file their financials. Thank you so much for that. I feel the same way. How do you feel about pushing markets toward China during this time, you know, with the US tension and coming on? And I kind of heard last year, Mayor Hoffman, I kind of heard one board, or he wasn't really a board at the time, at least he wasn't legally at the time, tried to take money away from Taiwan and put it all to China. How do you feel about that, considering the environment that we're in right now with China?
In my view, we should go after places that can that have access to Guam, that have visa entry requirements and that can meet all that. I think that's always a good way to do business, because you're investing in somebody that there's almost a guarantee that, hey, they can freely come here. I know at a time when we had Russia, Russia visa waiver was very good. People enjoyed that. We saw Russians who stayed here for 14 days at a time. And they were the ones at the beaches and shopping and they were buying up things.
But considering the environment right now and what's going on.
Now that there's no more visa waiver for them, I don't think we should invest money in those areas. I think they should go back to some of our main markets, which were Japan, Korea. That's kind of
In Taiwan, yeah.
And the Philippines, Taiwan, yes, they're they're
Even the US. US is coming into play.
We saw that bump in the US.
Right.
And we started to see numbers trickle in. And it's hard to make an impact immediately. And sometimes people think it's a waste of money, you know, one year, two years of investing in a marketing area. But it'll eventually grow. You have to plant that seed to kind of get the word out that we are open for business and that we're ready to do business with you and to come have that leisure. I think we have very similar cultures with Taiwan. I think we have very similar values. And, you know, my mom went to school there for three years for music school. And so she always tells me how well she enjoyed herself there.
I love your mom. Your mom is amazing.
Yeah, she loves Taiwan. So thank you.
I'm a big fan of your mother's, by the way. And please give her my very best.
I will. Thank you.
Are you familiar with Public Law 36107, which is the FY23 budget for this year? That's, are you familiar that there's a section in that area, Section 9113? It's actually, it gives the authority to the CEO to oversee financials. This is in fiscal year 2023, the authority and responsibility found in Section 9113B and 9110 regarding employment. By the way, 9113 is about all funds appropriated to the Guam Visitors Bureau by the government in Guam shall be considered grants and aid. No disbursement of funds of the Bureau shall be made unless the same has been approved, authorized and ordered by the board. But actually, what has happened in the budget bill, we have the CEO or the president or the GM, there's like three categories here. I think the bylaw still recognize as a GM. So I'll just say that. The GM has full authority on all appropriations by by him. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with that section.
Okay, you might want to look at that. It's on page 146, Section 35 of the budget bill. You might want to familiarize yourself with that. Also, it also covers department rules and regs as well. So sitting there as a board member, I think you should familiarize yourself with the budget bill of FY23.
If I'm a board member, then yes, I will familiarize myself with it.
And I think that's all I have. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Senator DeWanias and Senator Canata for joining us this morning. And move on to Senator Fisher for any questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have no questions.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator DeWanias.
She just wants to see Madam Chair and be back for me.
Be back.
You know, Mayor, I know that if the if the village tours go to Afame, I know that our guests coming down Spring Lane will have no problem because it's nice and clean. You do a good job. And if they want to visit the wild pigs that are running around there, they'll be happy because there'll be plenty cultural things to see. Mayor, you obviously have a wealth of experience and knowledge. And so I'm certainly supportive of your nomination.
Thank you.
The one question I wanted to ask is, you know, as you mentioned, the village things that are happening, you know, Guma is a big part of that to build, you know, local village businesses, small businesses and the like. So I think that, you know, we're well on our way with that. One of the things that's been suffering has been the issue with regard to, you know, optional tours. So I just wanted to get your, you know, thought process on advocating for continued support from LEAP and programs like that to, you know, keep those longstanding businesses that have been here that are not part of hotels and part of that infrastructure, but have put their lives, work, savings and energy into optional tours, which are really a mainstay as well that need to come back, particularly for some of our other markets. And I just wanted to have you share some of your thoughts.
Sure. One of the things that I was, we've, you know, I was a part of membership for a while. And one of the things that I always advocated for is how do we take the data that the statistics division puts together? And how do we give that to the small business to figure out? Because the membership is made up of people who kind of already know the industry. But these optional tours are not part of these, you know, a big bulk of these small businesses are not part of it because they don't see the benefit of becoming a GVB member per se. And so, you know, it's we thought of the idea is how do we take this data, break it down and give it to the small business, saying, this is how you read this. This is how you can forecast and change and figure out what's there. And so I think that's something that needs to be done is is in that membership part of it is is share that data with them, the arrivals data, the reports of whatever comes out for these optional tours, so they can kind of better plan their businesses. Optional tours are an added value. I think that's what people kind of go for is whether it be the parasailing, fishing, a lot of the things that kind of were disruptors were the kind of the advent of these, almost it's not like Airbnb, but these experiences, people want to visit a goat farm, people want to become a mayor for a day. You know, you see places all over the world that are doing this. They're doing a chef experience, you know, they can go and or, you know, these different things. And those are the things that we can kind of look at and capitalize on because they're unique experiences specifically for Guam. But it's it was always, there was always that disconnect between the small business and what you consider were the big businesses of that supported the, you know, the industry. And how do we kind of trickle it down there to say they deserve a seat at the table as well? And so how we divide it and break it up and translate that, I would either let the seat either in the bylaws or here in the body itself?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just glad to hear it. Because, you know, I'm not saying that the support isn't there now, but I'm just saying that it has to constantly be on the front burner, you know, because these businesses, longtime businesses and their employees, fortunately, that were supported, a lot of them, through the issues of federal pandemic relief funds, you know, I meet a lot of them because, you know, I come from that industry. That's my mainstay before being in public service. So still a lot of friends, a lot of people that are just struggling, trying to survive. LEAP has helped them very much. But those employees have run out of a lot of those resources that were subsidizing their paychecks for a while. They really need that industry to crank up, you know, faster. So please continue to be an advocate for things such as the LEAP program and, you know, encourage the board members to to support it. And I think Jesse made a good choice. Mr. President, I don't know if that will continue to be your authority, but you obviously have, you know, a lot of wonderful mayors here to support you, Mayor. And I think experience is needed at this time. So you certainly have my support for your nomination. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator DeWanias. Senator Canata.
Good morning, Nyat.
Bless you. He's actually my stepdad, but my dad who raised me, Ken, that's his grandma's sister.
I just had to point it out because, you know, I don't want to get questioned for anything unethical or supporting you. But I definitely support you. I'm very happy to see some of your colleagues joining you today. That shows that your leadership has very much a lot of support, especially the president of GVB here as well, and your president of your own board, I mean, the council. So I don't think there's really any challenge you cannot face. You've been a mayor for Sina Hanya for quite some time. And I think the people of Sina Hanya have echoed that your leadership speaks volumes for your service. So continue to keep up the good work. Let us know what we can do. And God bless you. I'm sure the family supports you in any way.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And
Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Senators, I do I do want to say that, you know, I offer classes twice a year for grant writing. It's one of the things that I really enjoy doing. I offer classes twice a year for grant writing. It's one of the things that I really enjoy doing. And I really appreciate my colleagues are here because a lot of what I do, I share. It's the sharing of best practices is what's going to make us better as an island. I don't hoard money to myself. I've never have hoard money to myself. A lot of the things I do, it always kind of goes. And one of the things that I've advocated always for was even in building the Central Community Arts Hall, I didn't call it the Sina Hani Community Arts Hall. I call it the Central Community Arts Hall because I want to build a Northern Community Arts Hall and a Southern one. Because it's going to take all those villages to come together to really put these together. So a lot of the things that we've been doing are very tri-village, quad-village based because we help each other. I enjoy helping them because when their, when their residents and their people succeed there, we all succeed because there's that satisfaction. You know, we, you know, a long time ago, you used to joke that, you know, the stray dogs are not from Sina Hanya, they come from Agania Heights. Or that, you know, the people that are sacking Sina Hanya, they're from Mangila or something. It's like, no, it's, it's never that way. We, we love each other, we respect each other and I support them and I'm here to do anything. They have my commitment to anything that happens, I will inform them. I will keep them updated and I will fight for them.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think, yes, a rising tide lifts all boats. So glad to hear you share that. And we hope that you'll continue to bring your spirit of generosity and sharing, not just your knowledge, but your resources to your role on the GVB board. So we look forward to that. And I'll just read the excerpt from the Enabling Legislation on how you are chosen as a board appointee. So five directors referred to as appointed directors shall be members and shall be appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the legislature. One of the appointed directors shall be a commissioner or assistant commissioner selected by the commissioners council. So we know commissioners now are mayors and that is how. So thank you very much, Mayor. I also want to mention for the record that we received testimony, a written testimony from the executive director of the mayor's council of Guam, Mr. Angel Sablon, in support of your appointment to the board. And I'd like to thank my colleagues who have been here this morning for this confirmation hearing. And if there's anyone who would like to provide further testimony, we will continue to receive testimony to our office at office of Senator Shelton at guamlegislature.org or it can be delivered here to the Guam Congress Building. And we want, want to thank everyone for providing their testimony and feedback. And Mayor, we look forward to pushing out your appointment into the next session. So in advance, with the support of my colleagues, congratulations to you. The date again is April 6th. The time now is 9:23 a.m. And this confirmation hearing is adjourned. Sido Massey, everyone.
Happy Easter. Thank you.